Alright guys, it's six oh one, we'll get the show started. We'll start with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I'm just waiting everybody to get in. Get to the quorum, put together well.
First time in five years that someone else has started the pledge.
I've always wondering if he's like waiting for somebody else to start it. Now I know, now we got that.
He's getting old, he needs to remember it.
All is well. Anyway, we got a quorum, so we're good holding there. There are no changes to the regular agenda that I'm aware of?
Nope.
Unless you guys have got one that I'm not aware of, otherwise I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
So make some motions.
Second.
Chelsea makes a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on that? That's pretty much.
Nope, I went through that, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Sarah makes a motion, Naomi does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. City council minutes from the last go around, anybody see anything wrong with those or do you think changes? Okay, anyone who makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment period, anybody you got anything they want to talk about tonight? Going once, going twice. Alright, we'll move on.
What are you guys laughing about?
Sheriff stuff.
You have no idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm all over the loop.
I am too, so we're good. Sheriff's update, we won't worry about that tonight. We'll do the next one. Alright Brendan, what do you got on eight?
Okay, on number eight here, council meeting livestream, testing. What we are going to be doing are testing services for live streaming. We have a handful of different vendors that the website company that we're working with for the state's new website has suggested that has worked friendly with the new website. It also worked, or many of these also work with Civic Plus, the host agency that we have right now for our current website. So we are testing a few different ones out. Staff has been talking with these different providers, see what they can offer, and then we use their trial period to see if we like one or another and see what works for the city. So tonight, for example, we're testing one out to see if that live streaming works or not. After we've tested a couple of them, then we'll go back and see what ones worked the best for us and then suggest that to council for live streaming services. What we're trying to do is have this hosted onto our website where it's streaming the videos and then it has the archiving within the website there too. We have been archiving our videos anyways on the state's website, but makes it a little easier to interact with. Also, we'd have the feature where it's not dependent on social media at all, or that's what we're shooting for. Like I said, it's based off our website. So if somebody doesn't have Facebook or any other means, they could go to our website, that's what we're trying to shoot for. So I wanted to give everybody update. If we have hiccups with the live streaming, you at least know why, you know why, and it's because we're testing different ones out. We've also had some challenges with our IT, our video system here. It worked Friday when they were testing them out. Then the staff is testing it out again this afternoon in preparation for today's meeting and we didn't get, we weren't able to get the screen sharing software to work properly. So RadiTech was out here today to try to troubleshoot a little bit before the meeting, but we'll have them back out here probably tomorrow, or the video software company out here to help us out. We'll see what we can do, so.
Thank you so much for doing that, Brendan.
Yep.
I think it's really important to have it live, and I know I've mentioned it before, just because I do think it's important to have the open transparency with COVID and sometimes these rooms get pretty packed. It's kind of nice to be able to have other means of watching it.
Okay, we'll move on, number nine.
The next one here is regards to Wall Avenue weight restrictions. We met with Casco County Sheriff's Department last week, met with their truck rags individual, also the captain for all the patrol deputies to talk about this issue and some other issues too that we were seeing in town. But one of the main topics, like I said, was truck enforcement. At the last council meeting, council was looking at considering reducing the weight limits for Wall Avenue from six-ten road down even lower. And I tried to encourage you guys, let's hold off until I come back after talking with the deputies to see their input. Right now, our policy for trucks, overweight trucks, over-dimensional is fairly consistent with Fargo, Casco County, West Fargo, within the metro. Now, we obviously have more roads that are considered six-ton roads or where you shouldn't have a bunch of trucks on, or if they are, they're per mid, reason why. We don't have the roads built up in our community like you'd see in a Fargo or West Fargo, for example. But when we're talking about Wall in particular, what are options about if we lowered the weight? The deputies cannot do selective enforcement, is what they refer to it as. Basically, they can't see an overweight vehicle and go, oh, that's so-and-so, we're not going to pull them over. If they know it's overweight and it's the truck guy, the truck guy's going to pull them over. If you lower the weight of Wall, for example, from a six-ton road lower, overweight vehicles will be trash trucks, for example. So residents wouldn't be able to get their garbage. If you have a delivery truck or somebody is having a moving truck come in, those could all be overweight fairly easy. You could have different contractors, you don't bring equipment, yeah, that was the intention, was to knock down the construction traffic a little bit or make them come a different way. But like I said, they would put them in a situation where they aren't supposed to do selective enforcement, which would complicate things, like I said, trash, even if somebody had a recreational vehicle, like say they had a big camper or trailer. They may be limited where they wouldn't be able to pull that onto the road depending on their, how big it is. So those are some of the consequences that we'd have if we were to lower the weight, lower in six tons. And those were examples given to us from the deputies. So I want to pass that on to you for consideration. We would not recommend going any lower than six ton. Really at that point, we reduce the speed, we're trying to encourage traffic to go other ways if possible, but it's a public road too. So very rarely do you see roads under six-ton weight limits. It's pretty rare to see.
And that's the thing too, I don't, it's, we're going to overcomplicate this for right now. I think, I mean, I've noticed too since they put down chemical a couple of weeks back. Obviously, we've had a couple of rain events and everything that we know about what happens after a rain event when that chemical is down, happened. But I've also noticed people are slowing down in the road too, so it isn't getting as hammered up as it would have been. So, I don't know, I guess I'm partial to just leaving it alone for right now, weight restriction. Let's see where this goes.
Does the speed limit get changed?
Yeah, it's down to fifteen, yep. I see people are slowing down. There's still some people are still driving fast, but for the most part, I think the residential vehicles are slowing down. There's been law enforcement out there, I've seen them at least four times. Not that they're hiding all that well, but just that they're out there, does give people pause, so that's good.
Are we getting one of those? Speed limit?
Speed trailers, speed limit trailers?
We, I believe we're on the list for getting it down here at some point, but we haven't heard a specific date to when they'd be down here. And I could bring that up with them next time you see the deputies say, hey, where are we at on this, so. Yeah, we could do that. Also, Wall Avenue is posted at fifteen, that was posted last week. Deputies were trying to educate individuals.
Yep.
On that, they weren't, I don't believe they're giving citations for speeding on there from going over fifteen. Depend, I guess depending on the speed, individuals are going, but I have not heard of any citations issued for that. It was more of a, they're trying to just increase awareness at this time. After it's been posted for a while, then they probably will get some citations there, so.
Anybody else have any comments or questions on that?
Well, with the chemical that was put down, I mean, was that, did it work out for the best, or was it?
No, the dust is under control.
So like with the rain, I mean, it's obviously been super dry, so.
Yeah, after the rain's events, it potted up just like it's supposed to or does. But there's enough traffic, it seems that it smooths it out. It's still bumpy, don't get me wrong. It's not, you're not going to do an Indy 500 race on that road, but it's not going to rip your whole front end suspension out either, so it's doable.
Yeah, I think whatever, you know, obviously Brendan did some work there, so.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Anybody else? Alright, let's move on to Ken, Barrett, you got this.
Okay, can you go to the second slide, please? Okay, so as a recall from the May third city council meeting, we reviewed an application for Deer Creek Estates located on County Road seventeen and Deer Creek Parkway in the northeast quadrant. At that meeting, you asked that the applicant go back and meet with the community to discuss further edits to the flat document to bring back for review at a later date. And the applicant has done that. He met with the residents of the surrounding areas along with council member Trudeau. As part of that conversation, what I threw down in front of you as a laydown item was the letter signed by your applicant that proposes the changes that Floppy and the residents of the area agreed to. And I just wanted to highlight some of the changes that occurred with the application, so if I could have you go to the third slide of the flat document. One more, please. So everything else pretty much stayed the same. The only changes were that the applicant agrees to add to a restrictive covenant that the age of the residents has to be forty-five years or older. The second thing would be to install privacy fence along the entirety of the north side of the development. Another change that was made, if you look at lots eight through fourteen, they were condensed and three lots were removed, so instead of thirty-one build, or thirty buildable lots, it is now twenty-seven buildable lots. This will be a thirty-one lot, two block subdivision. And then nothing else has changed. The zoning would still be R three and R four and then public facilities for the buffer lots and the pond. So with that being the case, I would leave it up to city council, whether you would approve as is or if you want to add these agreement points as conditions of approval and then move forward from there. But staff hasn't received any comments from the public. Staff recommends approval. Staff has evaluated this and find that it meets all the zoning ordinance requirements and it meets the intent of the 2045 Conference of Plan. And then Sally, if you don't mind, go into the last page. Therefore, staff recommends recommendation as shown on the screen.
Okay. Mr. Hop, I'm Volpin number two. You agreed to, just to make sure that the fences allow us at least to push more to go back through there, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it might be a little bit bigger than six twelve inches, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. And, let's see, you are comfortable with this now, right? You had a chance to remove the drainage pond, you did not want to, is that correct?
On what side you say?
Yes, sir. Okay, just wanted to make sure you had the chance, okay. The covenants for your HOA, at one point, I'm not sure if it was you that made the recommendation or if it was us that made the recommendation of changes to the HOA. You wanted them to be approved by city council for a certain amount of years, or, I'm trying to remember how it was worded. So that, you know, they just can't go and change the HOA immediately after it takes effect.
It's a suggestion that I made, that other surrounding cities have followed suit with, that they've, when they have restrictive covenants enforced, they tend to have a line towards the end of the covenants that say that changes to these covenants have to be agreed by the city of, in this case, city of Horace.
Okay.
I think it's a bit.
Restricted by years?
Pardon me?
Is it restricted by years or just okay?
It's not.
Okay.
So right now the covenant's written that way.
Okay.
Includes that. That would have to, I don't know if it's signed by you, but the name change would also have to get re-signed by you, so I can't, I can't go in there and say I'm restricted age forty-five and older and then tomorrow just change that.
Lucas, your thoughts on that?
Hesitant. The city typically does not get involved with restrictive covenants at all. And it's kind of a deal between the HOA and the residents that live there as far as how the covenants are enforced, because otherwise residents are going to come to the city council and try to get you to enforce whatever covenant is being placed by the HOA. And that is not a game that the council wants to be a part of.
So Matt, that's what I was going to, just follow up on that, because I didn't ran into that before, where the city gets involved in that. So that's, what other municipalities has it have done?
All of Harbors, no, I live in it.
Do you?
It doesn't matter, I certainly, certainly don't need to, I think it's a good city, but if you don't like it, no problem.
Like I said, I'm kind of with you, I don't know if we need to dig into that.
For the council to get involved in disputes that it does not want to be involved in.
No problem.
And I mean, it's happened before, where residents came in and tried to get the city to enforce restrictive covenants and it's just not even, the council wants to be a part of.
Okay.
I'll just point out, I don't know, like for fair housing, if you can do the forty-five years of age. I know they have fifty-five and over communities.
Sure.
I'm not sure what the laws are there. You just have to be careful how you mark it, not to exclude people. And there's certain laws without.
And that's another reason why we kind of want to keep the city away from that, is that on city being involved in anything like that.
Okay.
So, so how do we work through that, Lucas?
Well, and that's why, you know, this is going to be up to the developer to conclude this. The city can certainly look at the covenants that are going to be put in place and those will have to be recorded with the county. I just don't want it coming back to the city council later on. You know, with that line that he's referring to saying that the city council has to approve any changes to the covenants.
Yeah, I mean, there's HOA agreements in town here right now that don't involve us, I mean, like.
Yeah, none of them should involve the city.
So. Lucas, we have time, right? That's not something that's being approved. The developer's agreement is not going to be.
I think the only reason we missed Commissioner O'Shea saying this is just because it's something that I have to say to the neighbors. Possible change, they didn't know that.
Right.
So I think what we'll, I think what we'll do for the city's sake is just include it in Barrett's staff report. So at least there's something in writing that says that the developer has had these conversations with the adjacent property owners to state that it will be a fifty-five and over community.
Forty-five, forty-five.
I know, but I.
Well, and I just wanted to, I just wanted to.
Thinking it should be fifty-five. There's a chance that that, because I've never heard of a forty-five plus development.
I think it's something where it's fifty-five and over senior living and then it has to be like a certain percentage of people that meet that criteria, I don't know. But they, fair housing gets really, can get really strict on leaving people out, so.
Okay. So I think, alright, so we'll go back to the plats is what we're doing here with this. So, I mean, does anybody have any issues with the plats that's currently laid out? Yeah, I'm glad you guys had that conversation here, you guys were able to work out. Because I know it got a little heated here that night when we were having that conversation with them. Glad you guys were able to sit down and figure it out a little bit. Thank you to Mayor Peterson and Councilman Trudeau for helping out with that, for sure. Helped get us to where we are today. Yeah. It's just better we can get everybody on the same page, that's the thing, so. I actually, I think.
It appears as if there's been a lot of flexibility on your part too.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
So I mean, so, I mean, I think it looks better, to be honest. So I think we're, I don't really see any issues with it, unless you guys have got some. We've kind of beaten this up pretty good, I think we're at a good landing spot with this.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, so we can include some of these, if the city council approves the conditions, we can include them not only in the staff report, but in the ID agreement. I just don't want the covenants that get recorded with the county to have on it that the city is responsible for approval of them. If that works for the council. So at least you have it in writing in two different places.
Well, and, yeah, I think it's, I get what Matthew's saying, I mean, if they, if there's any changes, it just has to be reviewed. But, you know, if you don't have to do it, why do it, so.
Yeah, and the HOA will have governance in it as far as how they're going to go through amending their rules and their covenants. We'll leave it up to them then.
I mean, to be frank, I think what happens, I mean, generally, like once houses get built, it's unlikely that covenants get changed significantly, that the city would have any interest in it. I think what happens, I can think of some examples, like just getting one of your evidence, for instance. It started out to be homes with paddies on the fronts, was one of the requirements, they're going to be kind of older school homes. A few people did it, they got in there and the developer couldn't sell any lots. The guy goes, well, I can't do this anymore, I'm just going to change the covenants, I still have seventy percent or more of the lots. And they changed it, now all these people are stuck with the homes that they built in there, you change everything after that. It's not a business you want to get involved. But that would be an example before everything gets developed, where the developer didn't hold through what he said he was going to do.
Kind of a way to look out for your residents in a sense.
But I'll be the more council meeting, so you can hold it up to the player in the application.
And our staff preference would be to see this in an ID agreement rather than any other.
Okay. Alright. Okay, so how do we word this motion?
As listed on the screen.
Do you guys have any questions on this one?
You're in the minority.
Are you sure?
Russ, what do you got?
Be approved, sorry.
Those aren't the words he used. He used R three and R four.
I apologize, the wording is wrong. It'd be, you'd move to approve of the plat in the first reading of the zone change.
Yeah, we're in the wrong one, we'll back up.
Yep, so this one is just, it should be approved, not denied. But it's, it's the right verbiage, it's just that one word.
It's not the right verbiage, because we're doing a zone change from agricultural to R six high density and this is R three and R four, correct? Yeah, I think it's the wrong verbiage.
Well, this is still R six, correct?
It's still R six, correct, sir? Okay.
It is R six? It is R six. It should be changed to approve.
Should be approved, that was the city staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe if Barrett could just read off what he's recommending and then if somebody agrees.
Yep.
Okay, if I can do that, sorry.
Not a big deal.
Accept the findings and recommendations of staff and hereby approve of the proposed subdivision plan. Deer Creek Estates addition and zone change from agricultural to R six high density residential and agricultural to P I public facilities is outlined within the staff report as a proposal which applies with the 2045 Horace Conference of Plan, standards of section seventeen point seven and all applicable requirements of the city ordinance.
I'm going to add a plat of such date. There's still a lot of plats, so make sure you got the right one there.
Six one, six two? Do you make a motion, Jeff?
I'm going to have to. Yep, six one, sir? There you go. So, I'll make the motion provide us the plat from June first this year, twenty twenty-one.
I would say the plat in front of you, that you don't have to worry about.
Okay, the plat, the plat in front of us, I didn't really have one in front of us.
So that was included in the staff report?
That's the one on the.
Their staff report.
Fair enough. Go on to the staff report then.
Okay. Jeff made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, Chelsea. Alright, so all in favor say aye.
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 Here is, okay, on the rezone, we do the first reading, who's doing that one? Was that included?
Yeah, it wasn't.
You did, you combined it.
Are we doing a whole?
Bundling together.
They combined it.
Okay.
Okay, number one and number eleven, Jim, you got that?
Yes.
You guys.
Bits were received and opened for water sewers, Harvard Street, Department of District number twenty twenty-one dash three, Lakeview Edition on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Received bits from three contractors, Dakota Underground, Border States Caving and Celine Brothers. I wasn't provided with a bid tabulation from the design engineers yet, but the parallel bidder was Dakota Underground with a bid of six million two hundred sixty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Engineer's estimate was six million two hundred seventy-eight dollars, six hundred fifty-nine dollars. Dakota Underground has completed projects in the city of Horace, has performed well. Therefore, I would recommend awarding the contractor to Dakota Underground. So, we do have some stuff with the ID agreement, I believe?
Yes, we'll have some contingencies to the council awarding this bid. So contingency one, approval of the ID agreement, which we have to make changes to, to reflect these new numbers and to reflect the changes that were done at your special meeting with the deferral and soft costs, so that, that'll be presented to you. And then also contingency of the city's receipt of a letter of credit. We don't want to award the contract before the city receives that letter of credit. And Brendan, do you want to do another one on the sale of the pond lots? Another contingency?
Yeah, the plat was approved contingent on that.
Okay.
For Lakeview, but you could throw it, we could have it in there too.
Right. Well.
Yeah.
The city will need money before it goes through with that, through the purchase of those lots, right?
That was the bonding of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't want to hold up.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't throw that in there then.
So what's, what's due?
Because that's included in the plat.
Approval of the ID agreement and then the city's receipt of the letter of credit.
Okay.
Motion to approve the ID agreement contingent on receipt of the letter of credit?
Close. The motion would be to award the project contingent on the city's approval of the ID agreement and receipt of a letter of credit.
Thank you.
You bet.
Alright, so Sarah made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, the second thing we have for you tonight is an engineering services agreement for construction engineering on this project. That's similar to the last one we went through with the Terry Gardens third edition. It's a summary sheet based on number of manors and expenses. This is based, this is a much larger project, so there's more time involved in it. And we do have a, another person assigned to this project to, due to the size and the nature of it. It is a longer construction period, as the project has two components. One is the residential area, which is going to be completed in November this year. And then the remainder of the commercial on the far western perimeter would be completed early next year. I believe it's by July one, if I put that on the summary sheet on here. So it's got eleven fifteen is the interim completion date and then seven fifteen for the finish in two thousand twenty-two. So it's structured the exact same as we did the one for Terry Gardens third edition. It's based on, like I said, manors and expenses, but an estimated twenty-eight week schedule. This is a rather involved project, if you're not familiar, there's got the Beverly Brook and some other items that come along with it. So I think the schedule, the timing will probably take all of that schedule. I think it's a, I think it's probably going to take that much time to get it completed. But Dakota Underground has come in and knocked out projects in the past, so.
What roads are going in under this phase?
So, I don't have the map with me, but.
Because there's houses on the north side.
So there's eighty-second, which is on the north side. Then there's named, there's Front Street, which comes down and connects to eighty-eight, which is Wall. There's Saint Anne.
So it'll come all the way down to Wall.
It'll come all the way down to Wall. There's Saint Benedict's, which is going to bisect the property, which will lead up to where the. There's Saint Benedict's, which is going to bisect the property, which will lead up to where the church is going to be. And then there's the extension of Lakeview, which will come down to Saint Benedict, which is just north of Casey's. That road in there. And then there's another block.
Eighty-third, eighty-fourth. Eighty-third and then eighty-fourth. And then there's.
That's what they were named.
So is it all the streets in this whole addition?
No, there's quite a bit in the southern, southern part that isn't named after the commercial. Those are large lot, and they'll be developed, the way I understand it, they'll be developed based on the need and the, whoever buys the lots or how they would want to develop it.
Russ, go ahead.
And do we have the streets on the east for the emergency vehicles?
The connection on sixty-third comes from eighty-second all the way down to the corner of the church lot, which is where there's a lift station that continues that loop, yes.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, issues? Okay, I'll look for a motion, then to accept the agreement.
I can make a motion to accept the.
All right, anyone who can make a motion, give a second.
Second.
Chelsea gives a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Brent, you got this one?
Hey, the next one is regards to the county redistricting board. With the new census, or those numbers coming about, the county is looking at, they're going to have to do redistricting. Or evaluate that. And what they're looking for is they're asking each city within the county, except for Fargo, to provide a representative. Typically, they're somebody from their city councils to sit on a selection committee. In order to select the citizen-at-large position. So basically, you'd be like on an interview panel or selection committee for the at-large position, representing all the other cities outside of Fargo. Fargo has its own representative. Townships would have a representative. I believe they're doing the same process like what the cities would be doing other than Fargo. And then the county gets a representative. So there'd be just a handful of individuals with the county commissioner Chad Peterson, leading this group for redistricting. The commitment is approximately a half hour long. There's a meeting, there are a selection committee meeting June twenty-ninth at seven PM in Castleton. So that's what we need, is a volunteer from the city council to be able to attend that meeting. And basically be on the selection committee of the citizen-at-large is what we're looking for.
Okay.
We have the same meeting that night?
Do you have a meeting that night?
I believe we do. Let's see.
Six o'clock?
Yep, we do have a joint meeting here. So we'd have to have somebody step away from our joint meeting to go with this redistricting.
And where is it at?
Castleton. Yep.
And I'm sorry, like, what exactly are you doing?
It's basically selecting who would be the citizen-at-large for redistricting. So it'd be recreating new district boundaries for different elected positions, like the House and Senate positions for our area or for the county. And that's if, maybe the, so it'd be selecting somebody to be on that committee that helps determine if the boundaries need to change or not. Like I said, our involvement is very little. It's like being on interview committee or a panel that has a list of names of who wants to be considered for. I could check. Yes, I could check, but typically they refer, I believe they refer to it as somebody from the governing bodies.
I mean, I can, if we're, if I'm able to get there.
Send the park board.
You're a governing body.
Well, it's representing the city. So, I know it's.
They're elected, they're elected?
Yep. Says a citizen-at-large selected by representatives of each of the cities of the county excluding the largest city. If there is a toll of at least three incorporated areas in any such county. Such representatives shall consist of one member of and selected by the governing body of each of the cities in the county other than the largest city. The selection of the member, of the member of the redistricting board shall be made a meeting called by the county auditor for such purpose. So basically, it says that previous sentence, we'd have to have a council representative, a city council member or the mayor.
Well, what do we do? We have a meeting that night?
We'd have, we'd have to have somebody step back from the meeting to go to this one.
I could step back from the meeting.
Either one.
You want to go?
Well, because these guys should probably sit in on this meeting on the twenty-ninth, I think.
You're one.
The three new, the three new ones should probably be involved in that meeting, honestly, so.
That meeting is for the new, with the people we hired to work on the ordinance.
The joint me, is the joint meeting, planning commission, city council, discuss the ordinance, yes.
And Sarah, Sarah and I are in charge of that, right? Okay, so I'd rather be at that one.
Yeah, so I'm saying, I could, I could run off to Castleton. Do that one. Okay, I'll move on to thirteen.
So we should have action on that, just so, just to be recorded.
Anybody want to make a motion? Okay, make some motion. Give a second?
I'll say it.
Just a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Wait, will you have here for that one?
Oh, later. Okay, thirteen, Lucas, you got the.
Barrett will take that.
Sally, I think you bring up the part plan again. That one right there. Okay. So what you have before you is an application for two items, a plat subdivision plat and a zone change. This, the applicant is seeking approval for a subdivision plat entitled Earlwood Third Edition. Located off of County Road seventeen, right across the street from Eighth Avenue South. And then the Red River Railroad borders it on the western border. The applicant is proposing a twenty-seven lot, two-block subdivision of approximately seven point six nine one acres. If you could go to the subdivision plat slide, please. Next one, please. This is to accommodate for residential development of single-family detached units and single-family attached units. They're proposing to rezone from A agricultural to R three medium-density residential and R four intermediate-density residential. And P. F. Public Facilities. So the applicant is proposing on the western border, lots one through six. And then on the top, eight through eleven, block one to R three medium residential. And then on the far eastern side, lots twelve through nineteen, block one to R four, to accommodate for attached, single-family attached units. And then in the middle here, kind of the island piece, lots one through eight, block two. They're proposing to rezone to R four intermediate-density residential to accommodate for single-family detached units. Up in the northwest corner there, lot seven, that's requested to be rezoned to P. F. Public Facilities to accommodate for drainage pond. In addition, the applicant is working with Red River Valley and Western Railroad to create an easement west to tie into the city system. When staff calculated the land dedication cash and blue amount, because this plat went through several iterations. We're proposing a cash and blue amount of fifty thousand, fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. As opposed to what was in the park board letter.
What was in the park board letter?
The park board requested fifty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-one cents. That's when the original application was received. And the subdivision boundary included seven point seven acres. After staff review, they removed a lot and it got reduced down to seven point six. So that's why you see that change in that cash and blue amount, because it's based on the acreage of the subdivision. On May twenty-fifth, the planning commission reviewed the application and recommended approval with a three to one vote. Staff hasn't received any comments from the public. Staff has evaluated the application to find that the proposal is in line with the city of Horace twenty-five Comprehensive Plan. And therefore, we recommend approval of the proposed plat and the first reading of the zone change. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Lucas, go ahead.
So we already did this at the June seventh meeting and then just tabled it to this meeting. Cause we're waiting on numbers from the developers and engineers so we could get them in the ID agreement. Which I think Jim got those numbers today, so I don't think he's ready yet with any numbers. So I think the only action we hear is to table it to your next meeting. Because you opened up the public hearing already and just continued it. And so I think that's still where we're at. We need to get numbers.
Just continue.
As soon as we thought we were going to, unless I.
Or you do a contingent.
What do you need numbers for, for the plat and the zoning?
So we want them in the ID agreement, so they can approve the ID agreement and approve the plat? Cause it's just one reading now for the plat?
It's one reading for the plat and the rezone, not for the ID.
Two, three, rezone.
The ID agreement is a separate one.
Correct. But we wanted to have the ID agreement before them, so they could just do it at the same time.
They could do either one. They could do either one, but, or they, yeah.
I'm just saying, why, why we continued the hearing at your last meeting was so we could get numbers.
But what I'm saying is, we just did a plat and a rezone with an ID agreement not in place.
Correct.
We don't need an ID agreement in place for this.
We do not, but.
They can, they can finish this.
If they want to, absolutely. I'm saying why it was tabled in June seventh.
Okay.
Or continue in June seventh.
Do we, 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 we've done the public hearing, we did that one time, right?